Good morning. I will call the order, the April 27th meeting of the Slane County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
And Commissioner Shadwick, was that you?
Okay. Please join me for the flag salute and remain standing in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, if everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hands in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brad.
Assuming that the constituents are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants tab toward the bottom of the screen, that will show a raise hand function in the lower right-hand corner of your screen. By selecting Raise Your Hand, that will let the host know that you would like to speak.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd wish to address the commission?
Norman, Admiral Salina.
Good morning.
Has the county, is the county aware of the Kansas and Nebraska Heritage Area partnership? It involves Slane County. The president has signed an executive order. The 30-30 plan is to protect 30% of the US land and 30% of the US oceans by 2030. Have any of you attended any of these meetings? There was a meeting on April 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th. I went to the one on April 11th in Mecklen County. It's very interesting. We better get involved because if not, they're going to take your land, my land. And it's about property rights. So I thought I'd bring this to you. If you want to read more about it, go to grassandgrain.com, the April 20th issue. So it's very interesting. So I thought I'd bring this to you. You better get involved.
There's a lot of information out there on the internet and read quite a bit on the Facebook and on the internet.
Yes, grass.
Yep, you bet. Thank you, Norman.
And Norman, for your information, yes, I'm very familiar with it. I've been involved in it a couple of months now. Got the packet here. I was going to bring that up to my fellow commissioners for possible discussion next week or so. So appreciate your comments.
Let's open another can of worms.
Yes. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have somebody in the Zoom meeting that would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Farber, unmute and speak.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good to see you again. I kind of want to reiterate this.
And your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Chad Farber from here in Salina, Kansas. I want to reiterate the same thing that Mr. Mantle was just talking about. I know the administration, the current administration, has talked about this 30 by 30 in all of the different states between Kansas and Nebraska. And they're wanting to put them under federal control. And there's, as one of the commissioners just mentioned, there's packets of information out there. There's lots of information. And I think right now, the best thing to do is, we as citizens, just try to allow the commission to see the importance of reviewing these materials and making the decision on your own. Some of it is being characterized as tourism help. Some of it, in other parts of the internet, is being characterized as a land grab. I'm all for individual property rights for the citizens. And I don't like anything that infringes upon that. And it made me think back to a statement by Ronald Reagan many years ago. He said the nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." And we just need to be careful that we don't turn over all of our property rights to the federal government. I think that can be a very dangerous situation. And I already had my hand raised when I heard the comments from the commission there. But I appreciate the fact that you're already on board with this research. And I encourage you to get as many details as possible about that and make the right decision for Slane County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, we will move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes as presented for 413 and 420, approval of tax rule adjustments, and approval of accounts payable, review of township and cemetery district annual reports, approval of payroll as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
I'd like to delete the review of township and cemetery district annual reports. I have not had a chance to really review that. If we could put that off a week, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. We will remove the review of township cemetery district for a later date. Any objections? Consent agenda will stand as approved. Thank you. We will now move into action items. Item one.
RFA 154-21 WIC contract for independent contractor support, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. It feels a bit odd to be up here for something else, but be that as it may, I'm glad it is. As of right now, this is a contract that will help provide WIC dietitian support. We have not been able to hire or find anybody to hire for our part-time position. And we have one employee that will be going on maternity leave in a couple of months. And so this will help provide the additional WIC dietitian support during that time that we will need in order to continue services. This person has also been approved to provide WIC services by KDHE and is also contracted with Cloud and Clay County Health Departments and provide some WIC services to them. So they are very familiar with the program. Approximate time that they would provide for us would be about 16 hours per week at $26 per hour. And then we would, until such time as that we can fill our part-time position, just keep this contract in place as available personnel support in case there is illness, injury, or something else happens that we need to have that WIC support again. Alternatives, of course, is to refuse the contract and not sign. Send me back for more information or authorize myself to sign or the commissioner to sign. We recommend approving this contract so that we can ensure that those WIC services continue. There shouldn't be any impact to our budget, one, because we had that part-time position budgeted, which we haven't been using any of those funds for yet. And secondly, those WIC expenses will be reimbursed by the WIC program at 100%, like the other WIC expenses are.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who'd wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 154-21, the WIC contract for independent contractor support, by signature with the WIC contract with Christina Rogers as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 154-21, WIC contract for independent contractor support. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, thank you, Jason. Next item?
RFA 155-21, ELC COVID-19 Expanded Infrastructure Grants, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, again. So before you, we have been awarded a grant for $369,881 through the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity, or ELC Enhancing Detection Supplement Grant. Purpose of these funds are to support testing, contact tracing, surveillance, et cetera. And these funds have to be expended no later than July 31st, 2023. We intend to use these funds for the time being to continue to support our temporary, our funding for our temporary COVID investigators that we have been using until such time as they are no longer needed. And then we do have some flexibility to shift funds later on if we so need to. Alternatives for action, of course, refuse the grant, send me back for more information, or sign the grant. We recommend signing the grant so that we can continue providing those services as far as COVID-19 case investigations and contact tracing until such time as is no longer needed. If this grant is not accepted as far as budget impact, then, of course, then we'll have to seek out other funding somewhere else in order to try and keep them doing their jobs.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Any members of the public who'd wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the ELC grant as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 155-21, ELC COVID-19 Expanded Infrastructure Grant. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a great day, Jason.
Good morning.
Next item.
RFA 157-21, Fiscal Year 22 Adult Behavioral Health Comprehension Plan, Annie Greivis, Community Corrections Director.
Tammy, I'm so sorry. People are usually used to me just burrowing in. I got to learn to slow down. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Greivis.
And everyone. Hope that's a smile under that. That doesn't look. I am here today on two of the major grants that I write, we write, and also a third-quarter adjust budget adjustment. So the first agenda item is the adult. I'm sorry. The Adult Behavioral Comprehensive Grant Plan. Everything goes to KDOC. They fund the majority of our agency facility costs, employees, little services by the time you pay everything else out. But they certainly don't fund enough to get us through multiple other grants, fill-in, and also assistance from Slane County to make everything we do actually happen. So several of you probably have seen these applications before. They're a little intense. It's a good month and a half, two-month process between research, data collection, and review. We give them a summary of the year before and we talk about that. I don't want to read it to you or give you anything. It's very long. But I do want to talk about, just real quick, and you've heard me say this, they want to know how last year, fiscal year, impacted you on meeting your outcomes. We were right on target to meet every outcome at that point. And then COVID hit, and the court shut down, and everything else shut down. All the services shut down. One of the things I'm so proud of the staff we have is that we did not shut down. We shuffled things around. Staff went out and did curbside visits, parking lot visits, went to homes to make sure they had food and clothing and school supplies and everything else because the schools also shut down. We had, we have a high-risk, high-need population, and they're very underserved. And it wasn't good for us to close and leave those underserved populations that were losing their jobs, their kids were at home, and they were trying to juggle lots of things. So instead, through the help of staff, but also the COVID relief funds, we were able to provide food, shelter, pay some rent, school supplies, a multitude of things to keep families and their children safe and okay during this time. And then as soon as our PPE supplies came and the health director came to our office and helped us set up the office in a proper way so that we could let clients back in, we opened the doors and went business as usual. Court stayed down for quite a while. We bought laptops and set up unique laptops that weren't directly tried to our hub, that they could, clients could come in and participate in their court or anything else. And so I, shout out to the COVID relief funds because that would not happen, but also a big shout out to the staff that kept us floating and didn't want to go home and knew that we were going to only hurt the clients more if we didn't take care of them. So that, I talk about that quite a bit, as you can see. And then I talk about one new initiative. We are going to hopefully contract with a psychiatrist out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. What we're finding is that clients come out of jail and they didn't have their meds, or they don't meet every appointment at their mental health provider, and then are putting on a status where they are supposed to just show up at the provider and sit and wait. And if they have time to see them, they'll be seen. And if they don't, then they have to come back another day. Well, what happens is with our clients, they do miss appointments. It's not unusual. And then they don't want to sit there all day. They get frustrated and walk out. So sometimes before we realize that, they may have gone five days without medication. And as you can imagine, they need their medication. They're highly addicted, severe to moderate mental illness. We've got to get them serviced. So we want to contract with a psychiatrist that can do telemedicine. So as soon as we get that client in and we realize the meds haven't, or the client tells us, then we can get them accessed right at our office, get it started. And then the psychiatrist will work with them for a very short time, and then refer them back to their local provider and work in conjunction for a couple of sessions with them. So it's a seamless transition. We have worked through all the details, and currently the contract is on Mike Montoya's desk. So we're very excited about that. The rest of its outcomes, we had very successful outcomes on successful releases because the court closed. I'm going to be honest, that's the highest outcome results we've seen in 10 years. But we're also doing very well right now at about an 82% success rate as the court opened up, partially opened up. I don't know what next year will look like, but I'm delighted with that. And I hope it can follow a path back to the dedication of the staff. So we have two goals in this grant. One is to achieve at least a 75% success rate. So we need to hit 75% this time because we did so well. We're doing well, but we'll see what happens. And the other one is to get that licensed psychiatrist up and going into this next fiscal year so that we can have it running. This is a combination of a couple of different grants. It's a behavioral health grant, but also the regular KDOC adult programming grant. So the total in the amount just for the adult allocation would be $901,072.53. And then you add in the behavioral health request, that's $276,199.60. So I always say, when we hit a million, I'm done. That's great. And we hit a million, maybe, if we get it. Of course, we probably won't get it. So anyway, very excited about the projects that we're going to start up and so proud of the agency that I work in and very grateful. They have been in front of the advisory board last week. I was in Ottawa County yesterday, met all the new commissioners, and had a wonderful visit with them, an hour and some time. It was great. They have been all approved and signed, and I am asking this commission to let the chairperson sign so they can be sent to DOC by May 1st. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to commend you and your staff, your IT staff, our county IT staff helping you guys out, everybody getting through this year with this COVID. And what you guys have provided the services to the clients has just been way up and above.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners?
Annie, I'm curious. Do you have any idea the amount of hours, staff hours, invested to put these grant applications together?
I, because we have so many due at the same time, and then grant season goes from March to October. I won't finish until October. But probably, if I was guessing just these two, there are at least 30 days each, at least. I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say 80-plus hours, at least. I work evenings and weekends on these because it's hours time-consuming, and there is so much data to pull out. But I don't want to, it's not just me. And that's, I have other staff assisting me, getting me the data, giving me pieces to it. But also, that's on top of everything else we're expected to do. So it's an interesting thing. But 80 to maybe 100 hours at least.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any members of the public who'd wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Fiscal Year 22 Adult Behavioral Health Comprehension Plan.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 157-21, Physical Year 22 Adult Behavioral Health Comprehensive Plan. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Next item?
RFA 158-21, Fiscal Year 22 Juvenile Justice Comprehension Plan, Annie Greivis, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you. Again, KDOC, again, very intensive grant. I need to say that if the, look at the top of the RFA, this is a multitude program outline grant. Many, many services and programs are in this grant. Juvenile intake and assessment, which is our staff going and picking up youth that have either ran from foster care, their parents have been arrested, for some reason they're out there on their own, or they've been arrested. It's our responsibility to bring them in, meet with them, assessment, and find them a location to go to. And it varies depending on age. We've had them as young as less than a year old, and we've had them as old as 16 or 17, of course. And we've had youth, families of youth, in our building for over two days. And then we have to, of course, pay overtime to staff, and we get a hotel, and they all stay together. It's a very intensive program, but it's full of grace, and we look for ways to protect those children. Juvenile intensive supervision is our probation. It's our traditional probation service, intensive. Case management is those kids that are in foster care or other facilities, group homes that were placed by the state. They're also the responsibility of this agency. We must visit them where they are, work through their case plan, and work for reintegration, if possible, back to their families. Intermediate intervention program is a fairly new program. We're about two years into it. It is a way to keep youth out of the justice system. So we built, and I'm very proud to say that our IIP program was the first one off the ground in the state of Kansas. And there are still programs that are trying to get theirs going. What brought ours so quickly together is judge, law enforcement, staff. Everybody stepped up and said, you know, we're going to get this done. And what happens is, police and sheriff's office can give them notice to contact instead of arresting them. They get a notice to contact. That information comes to our office, and then our staff have to make that contact within 24 hours with that family and youth. Then we bring them in. We do a plan with them. We give them services, whatever they need to get done. And if they successfully complete four months, no more, I don't think, than eight months, then they are released, no record, no nothing, and they're never, hopefully, brought back to the justice system. So while we're keeping them out of the justice system, we're also getting the mental health services, parenting services, whatever they may need while they're going through this process. And our success rate is in the 80%. We could see a much higher success rate. What happens is, is that, and I'm not saying we don't need to do better. We can always do better. But what happens is the youth gave, or the mother or the father gave a bad number. We can't locate them. So we spend a few days going out wherever we can and to find them. So that then will resort them to go back or go to the court. Or the child commits new offenses while they're on with us. And that makes them unsuccessful in IIP. It doesn't make them unsuccessful overall. They can go to other services within our program, but it does not then keep them out of the system. We have juvenile corrections advisory board funding, which we call J-CAB, and our prevention program are all partnered with CAPS. So we provide services, CAPS provide services. We collaborate with staff. We provide family grief, trauma, everything we know about grief and trauma is that it can happen as young as one and two and three years old. And we may not know what happened to them until they're 30, 40, or 50. Or we may see it manifest much earlier. But children that are abused, sexually abused, physically abused, other things happen at a young age. And it can really, it will impact how they behave as they age out. And I always tell the story, we offer grief, trauma, different groups. And she was in a, a woman was in a peer group, and late 30s, and going through the process, and peers are sharing, and everybody's sharing, and she starts sobbing. And she was just then recalling physical and sexual abuse she suffered when she was a preteen. So I know, I know it makes a difference. She was highly addicted, got into that, by the grace of God. She got through the programs and worked through. She really did well with her peer mentoring and has been very successful. So I know the services work. I believe in the research. I believe in what we know about working with offender-based target high-risk populations. So all those things are in there. I couldn't be happier than I am with our collaboration with CAPS. Lori Blake and her staff are amazing. So we would always shoot for that. And the total for all these grants is $973,888.23. It's so funny. I obviously get mixed up. I don't touch that money. So it throws me off. So these have been in front of the advisory board. They have been back in Ottawa County yesterday. And I'm asking this board to approve the chairman to sign and move it on so we can get it to the due date of KDOC by May 1st. I do want to say that it didn't have, well, in one of these applications, it only had the host county. I don't find that to be the best way to build relations. I don't find that to be the best way to build relations because we are the 28th district, which is Ottawa and Saline. So I did have their chairperson sign. So our chairperson will need to put his signature wherever there is a line available and a date, please.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by commissioners? I will state the fact that I know that you meant $973,000 instead of $973.
I fumbled it because, like I said, I don't even touch that. You know, that's lovely money, but I couldn't. It's so much, I can't even talk about it.
Okay. But any other members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the fiscal year 22 Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 158-21 FY22 Juvenile Justice Comprehension Plan. Are there any further comments? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Next item?
RFA 159-21 Fiscal Year 21 Third Quarter Adult Budget Adjustment. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you. This happens some, not as often as, thank goodness. But because of COVID and lots of shutdown all over, we did not do overtime services and some other things that we would have expended salary and benefits on. We're not done. So this is, does not change the bottom line in any way. You can't get more money and you can't take less. It is moving money from one line item to another where we are lacking in that line item. So the first one is personnel to contractual. Contractual are the dollars that we spend on client services. We're moving $3,500, and it's in the behavioral health category. So it's in the severely mentally ill section. We're going to move from personnel to training, $2,000 for the adult staff. Because everything was shut down, virtual learning and education was wide open, and staff spent hours. First, they spent hours doing mandatory KDOC training. Then they enlisted themselves to reach outside of Kansas and learn from the states that are showing some real promising results in the things that we're interested in, the behavioral health and expanding collaboration and doing all of those things. And then the last one is personnel. We want to move to $28,000 to client services. Again, services for the clients to avoid them from going or having unsuccessful interactions, consequences. And so you all know that our services range from the simplest thing of transportation to the highest probably thing of rent and taking care of that family with medical assistance and other things. We really work hard to not allow the clients to use the ER as their primary physicians. That's very costly to somebody. Somebody pays for that, taxpayers, us, maybe, and our insurance. I don't know exactly how that plays out. But that is their first response because they don't have primary physicians nor healthcare. And so we set them up at the Salina Family Clinic, give them a blue card, and then we also pay for that medication and some of those assistances before they, until they can get stable and back on their feet to do that themselves. So those are a lot of those kind of dollars that go. So we are asking to move $33,500 from those line items of personnel over to the contractual client services and training hours, or training line items. And again, I talked about, a lot of it's due to COVID. There was so much shutdown. We also had less cost because the county gives us insurance premium holidays. And when we project cost of insurance, those aren't in there because we just don't know if one day those will go away. So we always project. So we had remaining dollars that way also. So those dollars allowed us to have those extra in personnel. Typically, we would not, but grateful that we do. So I am asking this board to allow the chair to sign. It did go in front of our advisory board last week, and it was approved. We do not have to have Ottawa County do that. It's just the host sponsoring county to get approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request for the third quarter adjustment as presented by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 159-21 Physical Year 21 Third Quarter Adult Budget Adjustment. Any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Have a great day. At that time, we will move into informational items.
One more. Mr. Chair, we have one more.
Oh, excuse me.
Kind of an important one, sorry.
Yeah, that, most important one, yeah. Item number six.
RFA 160-21 Closing on Jail Property. Philip Smith Ains, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Mr. Chair, I know why you skipped over this because it seems like we've already done this, right?
Yes.
Back on December 15th of 2020, your commission did approve a contract purchase just under 18 acres of land in North Salina for the purpose of constructing a new county jail and sheriff's facility. That contract was contingent upon two things. One was an environmental assessment of the ground, which was completed in January and no issues found. The second thing was permission from the city of Salina to actually build a jail on that land because that land was not properly zoned for a jail. It was zoned industrial, and industrial zoning does not permit correctional facilities as a principally permitted use. So we have worked extensively with the city of Salina over the last several months. As you know, we came before this body and had you sign for an application for a planned development district to rezone the property to public use, public facilities. You know that we also had a vacation of a street right-of-way that runs through that particular piece of property. The vacation of the right-of-way was approved on first reading by the city previously, and they held the second reading until we submitted the plan for development of the parcel. That occurred, and this went through the Salina City Planning Commission earlier in April. There was unanimous support. There was no public opposition. The city did, of course, notice this, and there were no comments received. And so last night, about 7:00 PM, the Salina City Commission approved two ordinances on first reading. The first ordinance amends their land use, future land use designation on this tract from an employment area to a public semi-public area. The second ordinance rezones the land from industrial to the planned development district. Both of those items were approved 3 to 0 with one commissioner absent and one commissioner recused. I will let your commission know that both of those, because they are ordinances, they do require a second reading at the city. And so if you chose to, you could delay closing by a week to make sure that happens. But since there was no opposition and they were approved unanimously, I feel comfortable in recommending that we go ahead and close on the property at this time. The closing statement has been received, and I do need to let you know we got an amended closing statement late last week. There were an additional $2,310 in expenses. So the final amount, rather than the 49165703 that's in your RFA, the final amount is 49396703. And then adding in the payment to the farm tenant on that ground, I have a total check for land title in the amount of $505,079.3 cents that will be presented today, subject to your commission's approval. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners?
Well, I have one, and it's bothered me from the outset. And that is the, the payment to the tenant. And I'd like you to explain that to me a little further. It's my understanding that it's to cover the cost of his crop. We're not going to break ground until October, but wheat harvest is in June.
Yes, sir, that is correct. But we will need to have access to the property before we break ground. We'll go out there and be doing staking and other sorts of things that we think will effectively prevent him from, from getting a harvest this year. And so this is something that county councillor Mike Montoya negotiated with that gentleman.
So the tenant will not be harvesting any crop on there whatsoever?
That's correct. So this, you know, we, as soon as we close on the property, we will have possession of it, and he will be off of there.
Okay. Any other comments?
With that, with that being said, that question brought up, will there be a harvestable crop available for the county then? Or will it be a wasted crop?
I would guess that it's going to be a wasted crop. The, like I said, I know we will need to be going out there and doing some pre-work on the property prior to breaking ground. And there are, there are three additional borings that we want to do on the property, some other soil testing and that sort of thing. So I, you know, there, there might be some parts of it that could be salvageable, but I think for the most part, it'll be a wasted crop.
Well, I'm just a tad skittish about putting our John Hancock to the papers prior to the second reading. I, I guess I will put my faith in, in what you believe to be, that there won't be any hiccups here, that that second reading will take place because I, I look for it to happen. I, I agree that I'm 99% sure that it's going to happen. So I'll, I'll trust, trust the administrator in that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand you're skittishness, Commissioner. And if there were any hint of opposition or, you know, any split votes on this, I would not be recommending this. But this, I think, you know, this is something that the voters approved. And I think that the city understands that, that this is something that needs to go forward. And, you know, I don't see a problem. But certainly, if, if the commission wanted to wait a week, I just, you know, I feel like we've been in this property transition, you know, transaction for over four months now. And so the sooner we can have access to the land, I think we'll be able to, to get out there and start doing some things to move the project forward. But one, one week won't kill us one way or the other.
Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, Norman Mantle. This ties in with this heritage area issue. What has been raised at these meetings? Whose property is this? There are no records going backwards past 1861. There is a claim against all this land. And I asked this person that was presenting at this meeting. I says, will this appear before the Supreme Court? And he hesitated and hesitated. He says, I hope not because the Native Americans have a claim against this property. This property has never been paid for. If you go back to 1803, the Louisiana Purchase, we don't have a clear title to this land.
Okay, very interesting. Any other comments?
Well, I, I will chime in with Commissioner Weiss just a little bit. I'm reluctant, just a hair, to not delay this one week. But on, that's on, on one hand. On the other hand, our administrator has pretty well put his stamp of approval on this. And I like to not get in his way of when he's running the business here, which is what he's doing. And that having been said, that I will, I will move we authorize the chairman to sign the closing documents and approve the payment to the tenant as presented in RFA 160-21. Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 160-21 Closing on Jail Property. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Okay, thank you. We will move into now informational items.
Department of Senior Services update. Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning. My update is through January through March 2021. I'm going to go over the accomplishments. Match Madness 2021 was held virtually again this year by the Greater Salina Community Foundation. They raised a total of $406,395.86 with $2,481 donations, or donors. So Meals on Wheels, from all that, we received $5,531.34 in donations and prizes for a total with the match, because they match 50%, And then the senior services account, we have two accounts with them. We raised $1,550.60 in donation and prizes for a total with the match of $2,355.90. This is an increase for Meals on Wheels of $2,267.68 and $284.20 for senior services compared to 2020, the fundraiser. Meals on Wheels for Pets. We received a grant from the Greater Salina Community Foundation for $4,219 for the cost of the pet food supplies. I also want to tell you that the Bank of Tescut right now has contacted me, and they're doing a fundraiser for pet food through the month of April. So they're coming over Friday to present all of that food. So we'll do some pictures and such. We also had a fundraiser that the Lincoln Park Manor Home Health in the month of March, and they raised a total of $460 in a ton of different pet food supplies, food, cat food, dog food, treats. We had different site locations where food was donated. Long MacArthur participated, Kindred Hospice, Kenwood View, and Petals Flowers. Ambux, the men's breakfast group for the month of March. They have come every single Friday. We have served them breakfast starting at 6:00 AM. And this was just a trial period. They are looking at different locations to have a permanent home for their They are looking at different locations to have a permanent home for their Friday breakfasts. So they are not with us this month. And we should hear hopefully in this next month or so if they're going to pick Senior Services. And if they do, I'll come back with a contract and hopefully we can get that going. I had two different interviews this quarter, strictly Salina. We did the TV station with Brenda Cataras and we discussed the pet food fundraiser and our continuing need for volunteers to deliver Meals on Wheels. Also did Eagle Radio with Day Four. And we again discussed the pet food fundraiser and why need for volunteers for Meals on Wheels. Right now, I'm actively looking for different proposals or specs on the Meals on Wheels drive-through so that we can complete our grant for this next cycle here. We do have a meeting with our subcommittee on Friday and we will review those. And then hopefully get a grant process started here pretty quick. Volunteer needs, I'm going to always say that, you know, because of the COVID, our population for Meals on Wheels is huge and I do need volunteer. So I will continually actively pursue that. Budget update, the revenue expenses and the average daily population. I did a comparison January through March, so you could see from 2021 to 2020. So revenue, there's a difference of, we've raised 16,624.37. And on the back page, it'll kind of give you a breakout of where those dollars came from. From 2020 to 2021, January 3th, March. It's so early in the year, it's really kind of a hard thing today. I mean, we're just through the first quarter. Expenses, the same thing. Last year, at this point, we had spent 141, 151, and 14. This year, we're at 124, 228, and 88 for, spent less, 16,928.26. Again, we're too early in the year to really tell that. One thing I will say is that the cost of food has gone up dramatically. So our food costs are going up. And I will review that with Phil. Average daily population, I did a comparison again for that first quarter from 2020 to 2021. And you can see the difference between the dining room, full pay, the subsidized, the Meals on Wheels full pay, subsidized, subsidized, and Sunflower, which is our contract company we provide food for Monday through Friday, lunch. And then Reflections, who have, you know, the contract is not, we are not providing that. It used to be McCall Manor, we're not actively providing, but they still are on the stats. That's all I got.
Any comments by commissioners?
Rosie, I applaud you on, on all the different avenues of revenue seeking that you've gone out and grants and so forth to get this. However, there's one here that troubles me a little bit. And I think we're walking a slippery slope with the Ambux Men's Breakfast Group, that we are, we are opposing potential private enterprise here in Salina. I don't want to get into the competition of, of catering and taking that business away from.
I understand.
I mean, you know, a governmental agency taking the business away from the private sector. I, I mean, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but that, to me, that's, we're, we're looking for trouble there.
They are a not-for-profit agency. I mean, the Ambux are, so I mean, I just felt like they were probably.
I know, but they're spending money, you know, that they would normally spend at whatever IHOP or where, I don't know where they've been getting, I mean, I do know where they've been eating their breakfasts. And, but there's, they've moved around a little bit. I understand that they want to get the best breakfast they can for the least amount of money. And they are a great organization without a question. I'm just saying that Saline County, I'm not sure we should be competing for that business. That's what I'm saying.
I agree. And one other thing to, on that there, have we, we have not been in the breakfast orientation up till this point, have we?
No, well, we do, we don't, we're opening up early for them, so just so they could try us out.
Okay.
Typically, you know, I don't open up at 6:00 AM. We open up at eight. And then we do do breakfast as far as rolls and coffee and all that goes.
Okay.
We have different coffee clutches that come in, so.
Okay.
We do provide for them.
Let me be clear, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying we need to take this and look at it a little closer.
I understand.
From administrative standpoint, commission standpoint, you know, I, I don't know how that's going to be perceived by the public and the private sector that is competing for that business.
Follow-up on Commissioner Vidrickson's comments. Rosie, do you have a price set that you would charge them?
We actually work with Aladdin and we came up with a price of $10 per plate. So I think that in the past, they were, they were paying the $10 per plate. So we're right exactly as what the same was. But working out a contract with their, they're still actively trying to work out a contract with their old place that they were at, so.
Did you say 10, $10?
$10, yes.
You answered basically my question. I just didn't want it to be a taxpayer subsidized price when they're competing with somebody else, so thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
If they choose us, I'll come back.
Okay. Thank you. Item two?
Livestock and Expo Improvement Update, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator, and David Flaherty, the second Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Phil. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning again, commissioners. So as your commission is well aware, we have entered into a long-term lease for the Expo Center site that is contingent upon the county making certain improvements to that site over the next five years. And we have also entered into an agreement with Hutton Construction to assist us with project management of that five-year plan. And I planned to introduce Justin, but it seems like several of you already know him. So we have been working with Hutton to develop five-year phasing. And we had a plan and then it was pointed out that, you know, there are a couple improvements on here that are slated for the first year that actually don't make sense until we decide whether we're going to construct the warm-up arena. And so we worked with Hutton again to modify the plans so that we would move those further out and then substitute new work for the first year. So I'll ask Brad to bring up the, the year one plan. There we go. So the total amount of the budget price is about $1.9 million. And this phase shows spending just under $650,000 in fiscal year, calendar year 2021. And if you just scroll up, Brad. So this talks about each of the items that we plan to do, some overall site work. You'll notice kind of at the top there, survey and civil consultant fees. And that item will actually be coming back to the commission next Tuesday in the form of an RFA. Hutton has solicited some bids from different civil consultants to get that work kicked off. And we have a recommendation that we'll be bringing to the commission. Then as Brad keeps scrolling, we've got work slated for Kenwood Hall, Ag Hall, 4H. Keep on going, Barn One, and then the Greeley Avenue intersection. So taken Barnes Five and Six and, and move them later in the process. So Dave, I'll let you comment on any of the things that you think are critical for Phase One.
I think as far as Phase One, I think we're on the right steps of everything. Ag Hall is getting the windows and stuff done. I think that's going to show a big improvement since we did take Barnes Three and Five out of the scope for now.
So then, Brad, if you want to flip to Phase Two there. Okay, so this would be for 2022. And we're looking at about $178,000 in expenditures next year, including lighting upgrades and more improvements to Ag Hall, Barn One. Go ahead and scroll up. And potentially some electrical for those other barns. But I think the key thing for next year is making a go-no-go decision on whether we want to include the warm-up arena. That is probably our biggest item that we'll be bringing back to your commission for next year is that decision point, which will then govern potential improvements to Three, Five, and Six. Anything on that, Dave? So Brad, then flipping on to Phase Three. So we're looking again at a rather large expenditure in Phase Three, tune of $700,000. We've sort of, as David mentioned, sort of front-loaded some of the important work in Ag Hall. So in, in 2023, we'll be looking more at Kenwood and some of the other structures. So go ahead and scroll up, Brad. Or down, there we go. 4H and then the other barns. Improvements there, again, subject to the decision-making process on whether we're going to retain those barns. One of the things that we talked about is we put a lot of the improvements to Barn Two further out in the process, even though those are relatively easy to sort of knock out. We moved those out a little ways because the future of Barn Two sort of depends upon ultimate use by the Fair Board and whether they're going to continue to go ahead and do the fair at the site or whether they might look at relocating. And so if they do ultimately look at relocating, that kind of changes potential uses of Barn Two. So we didn't want to invest a lot in Barn Two upfront and, and give the Fair Board time to, to come to that conclusion. Anything else on Phase Three you want to chime in there, David?
Nope, I'm good on Phase Three.
And then Brad, if you want to flip over to Phase Four. Yeah, so you'll notice that this is sort of a peaks and valleys kind of a thing where we've kind of got more expenses in Years One, Three, and Five, and then a little bit less in, in Years Two and Four. And we think that will provide us with some opportunity to then take a little bit of time out and make some decisions as well. But probably the biggest piece for the fourth year is the remodeling of the office building. And then flip over to Phase Five there, Brad. So then our final year, we're looking at that Barn Two work that I mentioned and then just sort of buttoning up everything. One of the other decision points that will be coming in relatively short order this year is the color scheme. As you know, the, the City of Salina had some concerns about making sure that the colors on the campus were complementary to the colors at Tony's Pizza Event Center. And so Hutton has proposed, they have a color specialist on board. I'm not sure what her official title is, but somebody who, who does design sort of work for a living. And so has, you know, given us kind of a, I'll call it a mood board of different options for doors and, and sorts of things. And has picked some colors that are not the colors of TPEC but are in that same sort of color family. And so we're, we're still nailing that down once we have a final recommendation on what that looks like. What we're going to try and do is do some, blanking on the word, but the. Photoshop, thank you. That's what I was searching for, some Photoshop images of the different buildings with those colors. And then bring them to the commission so you can see them. And then also take them to the City of Salina to make sure that they are on board with that. So that's sort of the plan as, as we have identified it for now. That's all within the, this five-year budget scope that had been previously identified between our budget process and Director, former Director Rick Lamer. So I think we're very comfortable moving forward in this. Not asking for any sort of decision from the commission today, but open to feedback from the commissioners about what you like or don't like about this plan. Then we can go and modify it. And as I said, we plan to be back next Tuesday with an RFA on that civil piece. So David, any other questions otherwise, or comments? Otherwise, we'll turn it back to the commission.
Nope, I'm good for this one.
Okay, and just from my understanding, Phase Two is going to be the Warm-Up Arena, which will be 2022, proposed construction.
We would anticipate bringing you all in 2022 a decision on whether you want to proceed forward with the Warm-Up Arena. I'm not saying that construction of the Warm-Up Arena would be in 2022, but we would make that decision in 2022 with a view to, you know, integrating that into the construction over the next year or so after that.
I believe the county did spend quite a bit of money in regards to the architectural plans from Kayla Adi. And those are in our possession now, so, for cost estimates, so. Got to work, thank you.
I, I didn't think that a Warm-Up Arena has ever been in our plans with this.
So that's one of the things that staff really wants you all to vote on at some point. Because I think there is a, a difference of opinion on the board in terms of the desire for that. So that's.
Irregardless of that, I mean, it was never in the proposal that we went on this improvement with the city that the, that the things that we were proposing and the things that they were asking, that the Warm-Up Arena was never in that conversation.
So that's correct. The Warm-Up Arena is not something that the City of Salina made a condition of the lease. But we did in that lease reserve the right to make additional improvements on the property as your board sees fit. So really, much of what we have identified in Years Two and Four is, was not on the city's list. For example, the improvements to the office building were not something that the city was particularly concerned about. But those are some things that David and his staff feel are critical. And so we wanted to integrate that in. But you're, you're correct, Commissioner Vidrickson, that in terms of the, the budget for that, and Commissioner White is, is right, we do have some estimates, a few, a few years old at this point, but we do have some estimates for, for various costs. but we do have some estimates for various costs, but that was not included budgetarily in this. We did, you will recall, provide for that in our scope of work with Hutton, that it's not within their sort of base scope of work, but we can add additional items to that scope of work with them over this five-year period, and they would bill us for those as a percentage of the cost. So we have, we have not budgeted for it at this point, but we have been keeping it in mind the entire time.
So this $1.8 million, because I've only got paperwork on phase one and phase three, this $1.8 million is, that is what we have budgeted? That's an estimate on the one, two, three, four, and five phases?
Yeah. Yes.
And my next question would be, as far as the line item, I mean, I'm just looking at, I'll just go to the very first one that is on my phase three. Eight windows for $7,000 to be covered. Will we go out for bids on this type of thing or is this awarded to Hutton as the project manager? How are we going to, you know, get to the bottom of that?
Yes, so Hutton is working with us. I don't, I don't want to speak for Hutton, but I don't think they regularly install windows. So there are all these different pieces of work, like the civil work, where they're, they're serving as the project manager, they're helping us take bids, and then we'll bring those back to the commission for...
So the possibility exists then that Hutton would be a bidder on certain projects? Is that, is that safe to say or not? Or you might go to the...
Let Justin come up. I will say there is work that we do plan on doing in-house. There are a couple of things that are identified, like some painting pieces that David feels like he can accomplish with his staff. And so it's going to be a mixture of, you know, sort of all hands on deck to get this accomplished over a five-year period. But if you want to address the question about whether Hutton plans to bid on any of the work...
Let me just, let me also say that I'm probably putting the cart before the horse a little bit here because, but I'm still trying to determine how we're going to go about that.
Justin May with Hutton. As you know, Hutton has a general, is a general contractor, and we have a design team with architects. What we're proposing is to, for each project, is bid them out to multiple contractors and be a project manager and a design consultant. If Hutton can provide services, they will then provide a price to choose from. So whether it's, yeah, so you just don't see one price, you know? The same company can do it, then we'll get bids from them as well. So we can be transparent with that.
Justin, you might stay up there for just a second. I have two questions. First, we talked just real quickly on the warm-up arena. I believe that there was a segment of the private people here in Sling County who had an interest in it and who maybe showed some way of coming up with some funds. I would encourage our staff to investigate that and find out if that interest is still there and, and secondly, going through this, and maybe this isn't, these different items aren't finite yet, but one thing the city was, I thought, pretty adamant with was the openings in the barns, wanting some windows or some coverings or some shading or something. Am I missing that? Is that in this workup?
Barn Two of shading that...
Well, I... Yeah, Barn Two, there is, and we actually talked about this last year, a couple of different options for how that could potentially be enclosed. I think that was the biggest one that I recall from the city's list. They did also want some improvements to the other, the three, five, and six, which those improvements in terms of new roofing and railings and that sort of thing are included. I don't think we had screening identified for those, though.
Oh, yeah, not on those, the barns three, five, and six, I don't think. There was no screening on those, the lower, the lower part.
I'm sure you've been working off of their, their to-do list and have built this around that. So if we're meeting their expectations, fine. I just knew that...
Yeah, and we, as I said, Commissioner, we are going to run this back by them as well. We wanted, obviously, wanted this body to be comfortable with the plan first, but we do plan on presenting it to the city as well at some point, just to make sure that they're, we're meeting their expectations. Yeah, absolutely.
And I just have a couple of quick questions. Is it, what is the barn when you first drive in off of Water's True Value? What's that barn right there that has all the open, that you store stuff in?
Barn Two.
That's Barn Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is the one that I think was this. Okay. The other thing is, is there, I noticed in a lot of this is that there's a lot of concrete sidewalks and stuff and to be done really at an early stage here. And is this, I look at it as like when they talk about new sidewalks all around the perimeter by the roadway, is that talked about on the south side also of all these barns where, I mean, where's all the, I look at, I'd hate to see some sidewalk stuff or concrete work be done and then we, at a later date, we have to tear it up or all the concrete trucks and everything running over it or going to break it all up.
The sidewalks are primarily on the north, northwest side, the sort of, the side-facing Tony's Pizza Event Center. There is some concrete work on the south, but it is more in the form of the loading dock and getting that to be more of a, more drivable surface, I guess we would say.
Okay.
Am I capturing that correctly?
Correct. Basically, so the sand's not washing down into the street.
Okay. But it just seemed like everywhere I read is that there was new sidewalks being done.
There is a lot of concrete and sidewalk work very early. You're correct, Mr. Chair, yes.
And we have worked with these phases to make sure that, you know, we're not putting concrete where we've, we've got a heavy machinery on it. So we, we'll still kind of tweak some of that, but yeah, we've thought, thought that through, too.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, okay. All right.
One more question from me. The length of time, our, the five-year is our length of time to get this completed, Phil? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we committed to in our lease. Yep.
And do we anticipate that that, I mean, that shouldn't be a problem, I wouldn't think, based on what you're doing here? It may even come before that time?
Yeah, we, we've had quite a bit of discussion about that. We're not sure that it will actually take five years to complete all of this work. If your commission is comfortable with that, and that was one of the things that, you know, that we wanted as part of the conversation, is if you all are comfortable, we may try and squeeze it into fewer years, just in terms of having better bid packages for contractors. But since we had five years, we wanted to show you a five-year plan.
Sure. But while knowing the, I mean, it's contingent upon the budget somewhat, too. Knowing full well what we have already budgeted for that project, and if we continue to go at that pace, we're going to be able to step up in terms of time if we, if we so desire. Financially, we're going to be able to do that, it looks to me like.
Yeah, I mean, from a financial standpoint, there's actually no reason we couldn't pay for it all this year, honestly.
And I think in the early negotiations with the city, the five years was something that they offered us, and we knew full well that we would be able to accomplish what they were asking within that five years. So it became a moot point as far as something we couldn't, couldn't handle. So quicker the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, we can do that.
No, I'm just one guy. I mean, others might not feel that way, but, you know, this, I know the city, I've always already received calls from various city commissioners wanting to know when we're going to get started and, you know, knowing full well that this was in the, in the works. And I think that'll be music to their ears, and they're going to be a lot more agreeable with us on lots of fronts. If, the quicker we get this done, the better off it's going to be, the more it's going to work into their major master plan for the park over there and whatever that may be, and we'll do our part.
Yeah, I think we're very excited about getting this started, you know? I know David and his staff are excited about the possibilities, and I think Hutton's raring to go, too. So we certainly anticipate visible improvements coming in the next two to three months here.
Yeah, the civil, the civil's a big part since there is a lot of concrete work, so that's, that's one thing we're ready to get going on, so.
Well, and, you know, another thing that we might think about from that standpoint, there is a lot of work on the books around here, not for, from Sling County Commission's standpoint, but from the private sector that's going to require lots of concrete, lots of, lots of laborers and so forth. So the quicker we get our foot in the door and get our projects going, the quicker we'll be able to handle it without getting delayed.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, if I may, for the board's benefit, over at least the last 30 years, there's always been some type of an expo improvement committee. And even with our president, our previous directors, number one wish for all the people using our venue there was warm-up arena, a number one improvement that would enhance that, that area. So just FYI.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Justin. Thank you, Phil. Any other comments? Item three, county administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, county administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Three items to update the commission on this morning regarding the jail. The biggest thing lately has been working with the city and the item that you approved earlier. So we will continue to monitor next Monday and make sure that second readings go off without a hitch. We'll also be filing the tax exemption certificate on the property once we have the closing documents, so I'll need the chair's signature on that. And our architects will be back tomorrow afternoon for more design work, so we are continuing to make progress there. Second item, the ARC clerk and commission office design. The staff met with the architects yesterday, and the architects will be incorporating that feedback and getting back to myself and clerk Jamie Doss next week, and we will have something for the commissioners to take a look at very soon. The third item that I had on my list for today was the American Rescue Plan, and I will characterize that as Hope Springs Eternal. I keep putting this on every week, thinking I'm going to have something to report to you, and I consistently do not because there's nothing new out of Washington, DC. So instead, item three today is going to be Salina Media Connection. The city of Salina has experienced some issues with broadcasts of their commission meetings. You know, occasionally, I will say that we have had glitches with our broadcasts, but they've been, I think, relatively infrequent and minor for the county commission meetings. The city seems to have experienced greater difficulties. And so the city took proposals from folks to provide meeting broadcast services. Last night at the city commission meeting, the board voted three to one to bring the video production for their meetings in-house. So I wanted your commission to be aware of that because I'm not sure what that means for us, right? I assume that that is going to have a significant impact on the broadcasts of our meetings. I don't know whether Salina Media Connection will continue to be in a position to support that or whether we'll be looking at contracting with the city to do that or how that's all going to pan out. But we will be working with the city to make sure that we're in the loop on what their plans are and what our, our options are. So I just wanted to mention that as something that's worth keeping in mind as we move into the budget process. Next month, outside agencies will be coming before your commission for funding requests, and I know that Salina Media Connection plans to be one of those folks who's, who's coming for their annual request. So just, again, lots of unknowns on that, but wanted to make sure that the commission was aware that that was going on. So that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Any commissioner comments?
Well, I attended the Airport Authority meeting last week via Zoom. Couple of the highlights that came out of that meeting for me anyway were the, number one, that they're going to build a new five-plane hangar to accommodate private citizens, smaller, lighter aircraft. And as soon as it was signed, I think they had already leased two or three of the, of the five spaces, so that's a pretty good deal. They also made light of the fact that fares from Salina, Kansas, and they used Los Angeles, I believe it was, for an example. You can fly from Salina to Los Angeles with one stop in Denver, cheaper than you can fly from Manhattan, Kansas City, Wichita, or any of the surrounding areas. Round-trip flight is, I can't recall now, but it was less than $300. So they're really working well with United and, and getting the fares from Salina. They're going to soon have another flight, I think, to, nonstop to Chicago. They have one currently. They had two before COVID started, and they're going to get a second one going here as quickly as possible. So good things out at the airport, lots of activity with the Schwans and Tony's Pizza plant that's enormous, big, and lots, lots of stuff going on at the Airport Authority.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I guess everybody heard this morning, this, I lost it here, NHA, National Heritage Area. I would like the board possibly next week, if we can get it put together, to have a short presentation on it. It's, I don't quite understand all the internal workings of it, but we did receive a packet up in our mailbox. I don't know if he falls had a copy of, to read it. But it's real informative and basically, or I believe our surrounding counties have already passed resolutions in opposition to this. And I know the Kansas Livestock Association's involved in opposition. Town hall meetings, as Norman mentioned, been all over the place. Unfortunately, I have not got to attend those, but I've had a lot of emails and phone calls regarding this and something the board needs to look at.
Okay. See if we can have our staff maybe find something out about that, bring it to us.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Any announcements? Seeing it or hearing it, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Seeing none or hearing none? We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.